All right, it is one o'clock. We will call the meeting of the Cleticat County Board of Commissioners to order. The Director shall all three Commissioners present. We will start with the public allegiance.
Public allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, the Constitution, our nation, my God. This is the letter reading of Justice for all.
Thank you, everyone.
Mister Chairman, I would make a motion to approve the business agenda.
And I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion as second to approve the business agenda. Any discussion on that? Hearing none. All those in favor of approval of the business agenda say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Mister Chairman, I would make a motion to approve the Commissioner meeting minutes for May sixteenth, twenty twenty-three as presented.
And I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion as second to approve the Commissioner meeting minutes for May sixteen, twenty twenty-three. Any discussion on the minutes? Hearing none. All those in favor of approval of the May sixteen, twenty twenty-three meeting minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Brings us time to citizen comments. Citizen comment will be limited to three minutes. Each individual will get one time to speak, so you don't get to break it up in a minute and a half now and a minute and a half in twenty minutes. At the start of your comment, please state your name and general location in the county for the record. The Commissioners may choose to respond to your comment at the end. So if you're looking for a response, you might want to hang in there and we'll preserve that last five minutes of the thirty minutes for that. With that, we always start in the room, so we will continue with that. Anybody in the room have a citizen comment for us today? Okay, come forward to the mic, sir. And then name and general location.
General location would be within Cleticat County. Lyle area.
Okay.
It, my name's Paul Letterer, and my concern is subdivisions and water consumption. I live up on Fisher Hill Road, which is an area off the Cleticat, as you may know. And I live between the Cleticat River and Silva Canyon. So it's a long, thin peninsula there, which, which is roughly a mile, mile and a half wide and about fifteen miles long. And the water that comes in to that little peninsula, if you will, only comes in from one direction. And the county has it zoned as five acre lots. And I would like to see it rezoned to at least twenty acre parcels based on water. I have two wells in my place. We have to alternate back and forth between the wells so that we have sufficient water. I can show you five dry holes, waste wells that have been put in over the years. There's no water in those at all. The Shippee Ranch to the north of me, best water that they get is five gallons a minute. And we've got several people trying to subdivide property up there into these little five acre lots. We've got a couple wells that have been drilled, some legally, some illegally. And I'd like to, county, to, to look at that area. I know there's an area in High Prairie that you guys visited a number of years ago and just re-designated it. And I'd like you to consider this section of Fisher Hill Road with that same type of increased zoning.
Do you know if our natural resources department is doing any well monitoring or anything out there?
I have tried to contact them, and with the issues that they have going on in Trout Lake, that's been postponed for another year.
Issues.
You know, five gallons a minute is enough to sustain a house and within Washington's water consumption laws. But if we suddenly have three hundred people trying to draw five gallons a minute out of the ground, it's going to go away. Come October or September, October, I have one well that goes completely dry. It's just mud, little pump. I have two neighbors contiguous to me that had, quote, good wells, and they are down to one to five gallons a minute. And theirs, one of the wells that they had, one neighbor has, is unusable. Too much iron in it, too much muck, what have you. Certainly, that's the extent of my. I'd just like you guys to, to look at that area and see what you can do.
All right, thank you, sir. I know we are in the midst of starting a comprehensive plan update. With that, there will probably be zoning changes, and part of that will be because of water issues. So we'll make a note of it and we'll see if they have any kind of well monitoring or anything going on or.
I think I found your property.
What was that?
Think I found your property. You just have one parcel?
Two.
Um, so we don't have, we haven't had any well monitoring off of Fisher Hill Road. It's always been over on, just to the northwest of you, up by the Canyon Road.
Correct. That's on the other side of Silva Canyon.
Yep, and then Johnson Road, which is kind of close that direction. But we don't have any wells that I've monitored up there over the years that we've ever had.
So he used to be the well monitoring person before he got this job, so hence the knowledge of there.
Yeah, but there's just not, there's not a lot of houses.
Not a lot of wells in there to be testing on to get a good, how deep are your wells, by the way?
Uh, roughly four hundred feet.
I know somebody else up there that had a terrible home, and they just kept drilling and drilling.
I'd say that's an awful lot of money to be wasting if you're not getting anywhere.
They were already living there in their well. They lost their well. I knew somebody else in your area that had problems too.
It, it, and you know, we live with these problems. Two neighbors who've put in reservoir tanks to maintain water throughout the summer. I know on the Appleton-Cleticat Highway, about halfway down the hill, they put in a new subdivision on the north side, right there at that bluff. And they want to put a little communal well in up there. They went down a thousand feet and are still only at five gallons a minute.
Wow.
It, so it's just, you know, we're, we shed off into the Cleticat on one side and shed off into the Silva Canyon on the other side. And so it's just this long, narrow strip that the water has to come down to, to get to us. And if we start developing all these parcels.
Yeah. Okay, not to cut you off, but we didn't set our three-minute timer, so we went way long.
I made my point.
You, you did. You had extra time to do it.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, anybody else in the room have a citizen comment for us? Not yet. Let's go online. Anybody online have a citizen comment for us today? Raise your hand, unmute yourself. Sherry, go ahead.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I'm, I, I'd like to talk about the planning commission meeting tonight regarding large-scale solar ordinances and the moratorium. And I, I'm starting to get really concerned with the inaction of Cleticat County and the appearance of our three Commissioners who are to be our overseers. I, I don't have the RCW, but you know, you're to see taxes, all this other stuff. But you should be our protectors of land zoning. And I just hear crickets. I hear crickets. I don't see action, and I'm really concerned. I hear that you want to do action, but I don't see action. So tonight, we have nine people hopefully that will show up to their volunteer position for our county. And hopefully tonight, they will listen to the people. The people have spoken to you regarding large-scale solar. We're not talking rooftop solar. We're not talking community projects that benefit us. We are talking, as you know, as we've been trying to be, I was, as we've been downplayed. And at first, we thought Carriage was eleven hundred and twenty-five. Now it's over two thousand acres and two acres of lithium batteries. It gets worse and worse every day. What are they going to come up with next? And so I am really getting concerned. This is two and a half years of us asking our county for protection. This is the seat of our, our county. This is a beautiful county. This farmland is high-quality farmland. There's RCWs to say, preserve the farmland. We've provided that to you. Our PA, our county hired or voted in, public servant, has gone mute on our county. He will not help you as Commissioners. And during the FSEC meeting, when it was his time to speak for our county, he was missing, missing in action to support our county, and this is becoming very serious. So tonight, my hope is that maybe nine people who live here and enjoy this county will realize what the scam is happening. And I believe that we need to ban large-scale solar. That could be our ticket. It could be lo, anything larger than a megawatt, one megawatt. And then hopefully, we can stop this invasion. This is not ever going to help our county. You think the taxes we're going to get is going to help. It's not. It hurts us. It hurts us. So I'd like to know if any of you Commissioners plan on attending this, this planning commission tonight. Of this, this is one of the largest things that will ever affect this county, and we could be left with a super fun cleanup. This is not a joke anymore. Who is going to be there? Who will participate amongst you three? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Buske, and I would highly encourage you to stick around and wait for Commissioner responses to your questions. I can't wait to answer them. Anybody in the room, citizen comment? Okay, we got one.
Kathy Moko-Goldendale, just wanted to let everybody know what a super Memorial Day we had yesterday, at least in this part of the county. Centerville Cemetery, the American Legion, they go there and do a ceremony. Then they go down to Stonehenge to the War Memorial. And that's very, that was very well attended. And then they go to the cemetery in Goldendale and do a big ceremony there, and they have all the flags and everything. That was, it was very cool, very neat. And I'm sure that the West End does something too, but I wasn't down there. So this has been happening here for a long time. The American Legion does a good job. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Go back online. Anybody else online have citizen comment for the Board of Commissioners today? Unmute yourself or raise your hand. Seeing none. Anybody online have citizen comment for the Board of Commissioners today? Or in the room? Okay, I'm still seeing none. With that, I will start signing paperwork. If you're online and you have a comment, please unmute yourself, raise your hand, get our attention somehow. Same thing in the room. Feel free to wave. And we will go about our business and keep watching back for you. Santa Ana, California. From La Pala, that's just still weird. Dylan, citizen comment for anybody online that has citizen comment. Please raise your hand or unmute yourself. Oh, I see Richard Foster. Go ahead, sir. Richard, did you mean to unmute yourself? I don't hear you talking. Let's not. We don't hear you if you're trying to talk, Richard. You want to see travel in Pine Forest? Dylan, citizen comment if anybody has citizen comment for us.
You guys know what they're doing downstairs in there?
Um, no, but the big TV that's down there lists.
It didn't.
It didn't say anything else? This one's done. She should be able to check signatures on that one.
Jeff was raising his hand.
And that one's done, so she can check signatures on that one. What is it, Jeff? Oh, got it. Dylan, citizen comment if anybody online has citizen comment. Please raise your hand or unmute yourself. We're losing our attendance. We started with only nineteen. It didn't pop up to thirty-four, but.
I'm saying everybody came back the ones.
I was gonna say, yeah, two-thirds of them anywhere are employees, so. We didn't see our new one on there who will be sitting in the room here starting next week.
Since nobody is, Paul, what's your elevation at your place? What's your elevation at your house?
Fifteen hundred. It, it, the property varies from fifteen to fourteen. What we found, if there's water, it's a shallow, most of the water is shallow fifty to a hundred feet. And it just flows along the top of the, of the hall. And so there's, no matter how deep you go, it doesn't help.
Dylan, citizen comment if anybody online has citizen comments. Raise your hand or unmute yourself. You guys came in for citizen comment, right? We've got a few minutes if anybody has citizen comment out there.
How can you tell if somebody has joined your meeting?
I'm looking. You have to look behind you.
Yeah, so the list of who's in attendance is on the right. If somebody comes in and wants to join, they show up at the top until we have admitted them. Then once we admit them, then they go into the regular list. And if they unmute themselves or raise their hand, they go to the top of the list. You want to go with responses?
Yeah, you want.
You want to start early? We can't.
Gee, you said you had a lot to say.
No, no, I didn't have a lot to say, but I was going to say it. We'll go last call for citizen comment. Anybody in the room or online have citizen comment before the Commissioners answer questions? There ain't a whole lot of questions, so we might be whipping through it real quick. Last call. All right, don't see it. So with that, Paul, yes, thank you for bringing this to our, in front of us. I have not heard anything about that area being potentially delinquent on water. Our national resource person is now in the room, even though she's leaving us here very shortly, and we'll be having to replace her unfortunately. And then again, like I said, as we go through the planning stages, we're going to have to look because there's, there's areas that are twenty now that want to downsize to fives. And I'm sure there's plenty of fives that want to upsize to twenty. And one of the things that we're going to need to get in either direction is to make sure that roads are adequate, water is adequate, and then adjust accordingly. And I don't know how we can shut down development or, or five acre parcels in your area if we have not been monitoring the wells. Because we're going to have to have actual evidence of why we made the decision. So it's going to take some time to get some well monitoring done, and that's through the conference. So anyway. Sherry, in your planning commission comments, that she is hearing nothing but crickets from us. I am curious if you were online this morning when we were having a public works update that we talked about FSEC. And we talked about it pretty in detail about road hall and what FSEC is allowing from us and whatnot. So that was a good discussion. We talked about it a lot. It's just usually not between one and one-thirty. So if you're interested in what that discussion was, I would turn your back to the, watching the video when it gets posted. And as far as attending the planning commission meeting, odds are you'll probably find zero Commissioners attend the planning commission meeting. Because these Commissioners have put it to the planning commission to make a recommendation to us. And I think it is wise that we're not seeing trying to influence that decision or meddle in the affairs of a planning commission. So as they work through the process, they will come back and bring forth a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners. This board will then either accept that recommendation or choose to change it in any way, share your forbid, sees fit, and if it does, it will go back out to public hearing. But that's when we will see it again, is when it gets out of the planning commission. So I, I don't know, what do you want us to do? Bypass the planning commission and do whatever we want here and just tell the planning commission, it doesn't matter what you're doing because we're not listening to you? That, that's not how government works, so I would. That's about as nice as I can say that. There is a process. Government works in a specific way. And it is currently working in that way, ma'am. Kathy, I agree. Memorial Day ceremonies and stuff the Legion does is, it's quite powerful. I did not go this year. I had too much gardening I had to do yesterday. Most of the time I do. I've even been fortunate enough to speak, and it's a very powerful, powerful day, so. I applaud all those volunteers in our community that are out putting up those flags, and it makes a difference. That's all I have. Either one of you have comments?
Sure. Thank, thank you for taking the time to come all the way and, and you put it on our notice and we'll follow through and check into what we can do and where we can go with it.
Currently, there's, there's really, I've got four neighbors, you know, in a, in a ten-mile stretch, basically. And so there's not a lot of people putting input into it until they go out and try to drill a well and find out.
There's nothing there.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Well, we appreciate you. And Kathy, thank you. As always, always glad to see your smiling face here with us. We appreciate you. And Lyle and Cleticat were very festive. I didn't get to go into town for things, but I passed through and they did have flags everywhere, especially Lyle. It was really decorated up. I'm sure they had a couple events going on. And Sherry, I hope you know me well enough by now that I don't quit, I don't give up. And I'm working every day. There's some portion of my day that I dedicate towards what's going on with solar. Where can I go? What can I impact? How can I help move things forward? And yes, we do work here on the board. The road department's been diligent. They've tried to work with FSEC. And we're not happy with the answer they got back, so we have to help craft a way for them to move through this now. It, it is very, very frustrating and probably on your end, being out in the public, not seeing what goes on day to day. It is disheartening to, to think you're left alone and people aren't moving, but the county is working on it. It's a long process and linking arms with other counties such as Yakima and Benton is important because they're in the same situation we are. We all have the same burden to bear now to figure out how to get through the new industrial solar idea. So I appreciate you staying in it for the long haul, but don't feel like you're being cast out to nowhere. As far as planning commission, we do have to be careful. We don't want to have to recuse ourselves if that comes to our board for a vote. So these are people that are dedicated. They're willing to spend their evening time and come in, and I appreciate them doing that. These are people that are dedicated, they're willing to spend their evening time and come in, and I appreciate them doing that and sit on a board and tackle hard subjects and. Uh, we trust them to do their due diligence and hand something to us that helps us get more education about the, the things that we have to vote on, so I appreciate planning commission and. And I'm sure they're gonna do a great job on putting things forward to what we need to look at.
I got one more, um, Mr. Christopher again, uh, for Sherry and. And that is the word trust. Um, I fully understand if citizens have zero faith or zero trust in their government. Um, I, I hear you, I understand why you say that, I, I have the same concerns. Uh, of my government. Um, but I guess all I can say is that you trust me. Um, you should know by now, I'm a man of my word. I will always stand behind it. Um, and I do not waver, I have not wavered on the solar issue since day one. Um, so also know that I can give you my word that I am not going to waiver on the solar issue, and eventually it will be back before us again. I would just say have patience, uh, and try to find a little bit of trust. Um, and, and we'll get through it together. And then I'm done.
Paul, thank you so much for coming up, um, you know, that, that area, you said you have four neighbors in that fifteen mile stretch, and I keep sitting here looking at it and. Uh, you know, with those large landowners that own most of that property, if they wanted to start subdividing and doing something else with their property, I can absolutely see how that could strain the water table and the water system. Um, it hasn't been on our list because there's so few people up there. Um, when you go across the canyon, anything, um, odd that borders the Clickatat kind of has those same issues because there's just no aquifer recharge area and. Uh, there's a lot of people who are living on two gallons or less per minute, uh, you know, just across the canyon from you and, and, um. You guys get a little bit more rain up there. But we don't know what those fractured basalts look like, we don't, you know, we haven't done a big aspect report on that area. Um, but definitely, you mean, you touch the open space, you know, it's just to the other side of the road. And when, I will remember this when we go through comprehensive planning about this area and, and you'll definitely want to keep, you keep appraised of it and bring it up when we do mention this moving forward through the planning process for the comprehensive plan update. It's a really neat area up there, you live. Uh, Sherry. You can say that you don't see action. But that might be because you have a hard time grasping the process. And we are currently going through the proper process, um, in order to draft these ordinances. We have been very clear about the direction that that is going and, and, uh, putting it to the planning commission. These are people who volunteer their time and they are working on multiple projects this year, and they are meeting biweekly usually, um, to try to work through these. Um, we gave. Very little direction to them with regards to this. Uh, industrial solar within the areas that the moratorium covers so that they could work through those processes themselves. Um, rather than us directing them the direction we want to see it go and asking for them to be a rubber stamp. We always have to also be cognizant that it's very easy for you to talk about industrial solar. And then intermix in there, the application that's in front of FSEC right now. We can't do that, we don't have that ability, they're, they're two very different projects, one is, one is creating standards for, you know, projects, another is an individual project which is going through a statewide process. And if the PA has gone mute with regards to what you're saying, there's likely a reason for that. And that's that because no matter what, he has to protect the interests of the county. And he's not going to say something that would hinder the interest of the county. And in regards to, um, whether or not any of us will be attending tonight, I will not be attending the meeting tonight. Um, I have full faith and credit in the planning commission and the direction that they're going. Um, and that what they present to us will, will be fully fleshed out, plan for how to industrial, industrial scale solar over the areas that have been included in the moratorium. And, you know. It's easy to, to say a lot of things, but to say that, that, you know, a solar project is gonna turn into a superfund site. I don't usually use, you know, fear tactics and words like that when describing situations, but, um. This isn't the nineteen seventies, we're not really creating new superfund sites anymore. Um, you know, if anything, we're, we're cleaning up our areas in this county and. Our ecology and our environment are far better off today than they were forty years ago. And Kathy, thank you always for bringing a ray of sunshine and saying something positive. I didn't get to attend any of the, uh, Memorial Day celebrations over here, so thank you for sharing how well it was.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Anderson, um, it is one thirty-six, public comment is officially over, but I will use chairman prerogative. To allow Lisa Evans, who has her hand raised for the last five minutes to speak, go ahead, Ms. Evans.
Okay, uh, well, thank you county commissioners, uh, for this few minutes, I'm sorry I had a little bit of tech issues, and so I wasn't able to get on earlier. I just wanted to say, um, that I think filing week for our county went really well, we had a, a lot of people. Um, that have filed to run for office, and I think that's a positive thing for our county to see that we have so many people that are active. And want to have a say in their county, so I just want to bring that up, um, because I think that's a really, a great thing for our county and all the voters in it, and then also, um, I just wanted to put out there, you know, we have. Three governor candidates that will be in Clickatat County this Saturday. Uh, Semi Bird, Laurel Wheat Con and Dr. Rowel Garcia, all of them are very good speakers, of course, the governor's race is next year. Um, but what an honor and a privilege to have these strong candidates co- uh, coming into our county. So they'll be here Saturday afternoon at the Society Hotel, um, we are selling out quickly on tickets. So if you were planning on attending, I just wanted to give you a heads up to, uh, to RSVP sooner rather than later. And of course, you can go to ClickatatCountyRepublicans.org to get tickets, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. Um, yeah, we discussed that earlier and I told Ms. Moko and Mr. West in the room that I probably will not be there because I have the golden nail clean up that day. Uh, but I hope your event turns out wonderful and is packed and you raise lots of money. Um, moving on, no public hearings, public meetings and bid openings, so we can move on to consent agenda, if my statements are ready.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda, uh, with four items.
Okay, I will second the motion.
We have a motion to second to approve the consent agenda and all four items in it, uh, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval of consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
Mr., are you done?
Go ahead.
Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the, uh, count's payable warrants in the amount of two hundred and seventeen thousand, four hundred and twenty-six, or eight hundred and twenty-six dollars and thirty-two cents. And the payroll benefit warrants in the amount of one million, one hundred and thirty-two thousand, thirty-one dollars and eighty-eight cents for the date ending May thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
I will second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion to second to pay the bills, any discussion on that? Um, I will actually have a smidge of discussion on that, one of the bills in there was the coroner for January. Um, thousand dollars a month, um, there were four, um. Calls for service is the way I would determine, uh, of which one of them had an autopsy, the other three did. So. That's, we, by twenty twenty-five, we have to decide whether we're gonna have an elected coroner or an appointed coroner. And how we're gonna fund that and how we're gonna do that, right now we sublease with a funeral home in Vancouver, so, not, one of the bills came in, so I was just. For future knowledge for, that's where that went, anyway, enough.
Is that charged out per event, each time they?
It's a monthly bill.
It's a month.
That, yep, it comes in every, and it's, I think it's Gardener's Funeral Home in, um, Vancouver, if I'm thinking off the top of my head.
White Salmon.
Is it?
Yes.
Okay. I thought it was in Park County though. Interesting, okay. Um, so anyway, yeah, we've got to figure out expenses. Um, all right, so we have a discussion on the payment of the bills, all those in favor of approval of the bills, paying the bills, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Uh, next up, department update, natural resource economic development director Dave McClure for department update.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, sir.
If it's okay, we'll start out with, uh, update on the SBDC from Lorena Low, she needs to get through an appointment here in a bit.
May I just pass this document as you guys think?
Thank you.
Okay, oh, thank you, Dave, thank you. So, just a quick update of this, I, I was with you guys last month, so this report is, I'm concentrating it in Goldendale, um. Because I, I know you guys wanted, had wanted to know what's happening in order in, uh, Goldendale and, uh, so these numbers are specific, if we get county and I, and I really work. In, uh, focusing on Goldendale, um, so. These, um. These last five months have been really, really busy, I've probably put over two hundred and fifty hours just on this county. Uh, there was a, if you guys remember, the Department of Commerce granted a pre-significant grant to the city and to the Chamber of Commerce to do some workshops. And some outreach, and then Maquette had another, my, another funds for pop talks. So, there were four workshops, there was the, the small business and community branding and marketing profit mastery. Which is a very high level, uh, financial training, restaurant and hotel management, which actually the presenter was from Washington, Washington Small Business Development Center. So. With the business community, we reached thirty-five, there were thirty-five businesses and attended and thirty-nine attendees. Twenty-two businesses for branding with twenty-six attendees, fourteen for profit mastery and twelve for the restaurant. So it was a significant number, all, I mean, all of those are local businesses, I'm not including. Uh, Lyle or Bing Jin or White Salmon, these are just Goldendale businesses, so there was a significant outreach with that money. And this significant amount of time, as a result of that. Our numbers really jumped, so for Clickatat County, I have forty-five active clients right now. Um, and from those forty-five active clients in the county, twenty are just from Goldendale. Um, from those twenty. There are five in the medical field, four in restaurants, one hotel, uh, one bookstore slash coffee shop, manufacturing, education and retail.
Medical. Yeah, um. Is there a way to give me more information on medical without labeling the people? I mean, is it medical supplies, is it medical services, is it? Home care, is it?
No, they're medical practices, so there's one, then you, there is one, then he's trying to expand and relocate, so we're looking at purchasing property in modeling. So no, they're medical services, it's not retail, so I have one, one business that I put in my, in a retail, then it's actually providing medical supplies potentially. But it's in retail. So when I said medical means chiropractors. Eye doc, something like.
Tennis, something, yeah.
Exactly, um, thank you for asking for clarification, so those are the areas of the categories and art. And then. The work that we're doing are, includes startups, expansions, relocation, importing and exporting and acquisition. Um, I want, I do want to highlight that even though this is Goldendale, I have a very significant client with very serious importing and exporting that is located in Bing Jin. We've been working really, really hard with this person, with this company, it's an extremely exciting company. And, um, so they already exporting direct, they're manufacturing in, uh, China, and they're exporting to Germany and to, um. Australia and Canada, and everything has been organic and bought by, um. Their website, so we actually, the last month, I've been extremely busy with them because entire, uh, trade team from US. From the SBA and us, we jump in to kind of help this company because can be significant for the area and it's not. In the, it's not, um, drones or anything like that, it's totally different. Very exciting project. So I just want to mention that, but I have another company in Goldendale that is actually producing in Mexico and it already has three potential clients in, uh, overseas. Um, very interesting company as well, so that is a quick summary of what's happening. So, and you just want to take a couple of minutes to let you know how this is. Um, how my schedule is working around this, so because, so as you can see the difference of industry, so we know that on Mondays, all the restaurants are closed. So on Mondays, I basically work with restaurants either here or, you know, whenever we work, and then. Couple of the medical practices, the doctor did not work on Tuesday, so my schedule is kind of like. Right now, because sometimes I just come from a meeting to meet early with the restaurants on Mondays, and then I rush back to meet with another client, so it has been. Quite a difficult between some of the distances, so, um, that's basically how I'm working, trying to serve everybody, we're switching more to. On in-person other businesses versus online, so, um. My workload changed a lot, I was doing a lot of online, now I'm doing more in-person. And we have five loan packages, active loan packages that we're working with, so that means that I have to see with them for hours, just kind of going through their numbers, so. That's basically how we're working now. Any questions?
What is, uh, in the education side, is that hopefully Chalk?
Yeah, so we are back to Chalk, and I'm sure you guys heard about it, so we are back to Chalk, now there are other parties involved, um. The school district, so there have been a lot of different meetings, the school district has his participating, some other businesses have been participating, I've been. Because of the way that we work, I've been trying to stick to the client that is actually working with me, but now seems like each party is kind of. Asking me to be, uh. My client, so I can work with each part of them, because these, so we're but. Same scenario, but now the school district's involved, the Chamber of Commerce is involved, and seems like other businesses are involved. So that's, that's one, and then we have enough, and a separate after-school person. Um, then he's looking to something else. And, uh, and a separate person, then he's browsing into just infant care, so. But you know, everything is coming from the same conversation we had the last year, we're just kind of popping in, trying to pencil numbers out.
Right.
But has been very, very active.
Good. Maybe something good will come of it.
Yeah, I think it will, you know, there's a lot of brains, there is a lot, there is a lot of people, there's a lot of brains that are lost, there is a lot of solution, so trying to, so, uh. Make something happen, and also there's some urgency because of the appropriation money. Then it's still hanging in there, then we don't know what's gonna happen if it's not used, so that's actually pushing a lot of people to decide something. Sooner rather than later, is that gonna be the solution? No, is that gonna serve the population, then we need probably not, but I think something is gonna come out of it.
Yep.
Thank you guys, thank you.
We need two copies for some reason? You gave me three or something. I'm the chairman, but you like me that much, huh? Give me all the copies. I didn't get a map, but that's okay, I didn't need a map.
Uh, it's, if, uh, you would like a map, ask.
Oh, is that the stream flowy, is that the same one I have in an email?
Potentially.
Potentially, uh.
Um, so to begin with, um, we'll start off with infrastructure, uh, the Plumby Gorge Regional Airport. With the USEA, US EDA grant that we have, um, I'm currently exploring a million dollar ask. It would be a loan from the Community Aviation Revitalization Board. Um, it would be an annual serviceable loan of sixty-one thousand, one hundred and fifty-six dollars and seventy-two cents over a twenty-year period. Uh, we are currently working closely with airport manager and the public works director on how this loan will fit into the overall. on how this loan will fit into the overall project. Um, and we will likely need to arrange an, an executive KCPA meeting for recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners uh to apply for the funding. Um, currently, we're trying to arrange it so that from a timing perspective that there is no need for any sort of backstop uh from using our point oh nine dollars or, or anything else like that, so the idea is to have the hanger itself service the entire loan over, over the, over that twenty-year time period. Um, moving forward, we have Maquette, uh, Maquette is still pursuing the region-wide Brownfield program, we're still in a holding pattern with that. They did, um, they did get awarded the Regional Innovation Hub, a grant, it's a Washington Department of Commerce grant. ICAP, it's a, an acronym for Innovative Cluster Accelerator Program. Um, this was awarded to the GTA program within Maquette, um, or its technology alliance. Um, we're involved with this, uh, we helped them apply for it. Um, and basically as they're finishing up their contracts with Commerce, uh, we're going to be engaged with that, the program itself is to help our aerospace industries, aerospace companies, uh, to basically accelerate innovation, best practices, stuff like that, and it's going to be a sustainable, ongoing program, uh, that Maquette's going to be used, uh, that, that Maquette's going to be involved with, in charge of, and uh, and we're going to be involved with that. Um, moving forward with Goldendale. Uh, they're just about done with the building, I believe they might have requested for a uh an extension, but as far as the Business Accelerator Program for that grant, that's all finished. And so I'm not sure exactly what else they might have left with that building, it seems to be fully done to me, but um, the deadline for that can be tomorrow, but that was a one point one million dollar grant that, that the city had pursued back in, I want to say October, but they were awarded in October, November timeframe, so we're just wrapping that up. Um, for business retention and expansion, uh, workforce development, um, we're still pursuing that SRF funds through the Governor's Office for our aerospace industries on the, on the west side. Um, we should know about this funding this afternoon, we were supposed to have known back on May ninth. They did meet on May ninth and they still have not given us word on who got funding, who did not, but we should know this afternoon. Um, that training specifically is uh two workforce trainings, one is Dale Carnegie, uh, it's a leadership course and the other is a geometric dimensioning and tolerancing course. Um, is going to be benefiting thirty-nine employees, the grand dollars for that's forty-one thousand five hundred fifty-five dollars with a company match of the same amount. Um, our portion of this, as we move forward, is, is uh, we applied for it and then as we move forward, we will be drafting up the contracts between the companies and the Mount Adams Chamber of Commerce as well as the contract between the Mount Adam Chamber of Commerce through the Department of Commerce, so we're trying to make it so it's as hands-off for Mount Adams uh Chamber as we can, and they've always been a willing partner and easy to work with, uh, both them and the Gold Milk Chamber, so we've done these, these projects in the past, that's our kind of piece of the pie with that. Um, community activities. Uh, we're still attending the Clicktack County Childcare Committee Meetings as was discussed just now. Um, and then on May tenth, we had a job fair. Uh, we had ten Clicktack County businesses participate and approximately twenty-five students uh that came out. And so this is considered a, a local success for us, um, and, and it's a good way to kind of test the waters, so to speak, I suspect next year, we're going to probably expand it, make it more of a, more of a career day, so we're going to be expanding it from grades nine to twelve, and so, and there'll be more of a mandatory type of attendance as well, we're going to be floating around to uh the school district, so I know the career days go really, really well over on the White Salmon Valley School District, so we're going to try and replicate some of that here locally, Golddome. Um, broadband. Uh, the very promising news, if you look at that sheet that I gave you, the Excel sheet, unfortunately, I did not do one for myself, maybe we don't write, no, I didn't bring one. Okay. Thanks, um. So the rapid design study. Um. Oh, thank you, um. Basically, it says, it, it came out and said that we had a very high chance of, of obtaining grand dollars from BEAD, BEAD is a federal program, um, in likely years one and two, and that's going to be over the next five-year time time period for that federal funding, uh, they submitted a working spreadsheet with different options, with, which is what I just gave you guys. Those, what they're suggesting for the cost structure of it uh would be to, in, in order to provide reliable broadband, seventy-nine percent of Clicktack County, um, they're looking at thirty-five percent of it would be fiber and forty-four percent of it would be fixed wireless. Which would basically include fifty-nine towers and approximately eighty thousand square feet of fiber. So that's going to be proposed, and the estimated cost for this project is twenty-one million dollars. On that sheet that I just, that, that I just handed out, they have it broken down uh by options, A1, B2, C3, D4, E5 and F6, and that's basically what we're looking at as far as uh how it's broken down, so uh we also sent out a link. It, the, the link that we handed out, uh, or that we sent to the county commissioners, this form was very difficult to kind of bring up, which is why we're just handing it out to you, so you're not having a not a very intuitive, friendly software that they handed out for this. Uh, but this is where we're at so far with that, and we're still working with Kerry out of Maquette with the WSU Extension Grant for broadband as well, so.
And it says municipal bond on there, but I believe that's the name of the tab in the spreadsheet as opposed to, it's not proposing a bond, it's just, that's the name.
Yes, yes, thank, yeah, thank you for that clarification, yeah, it's, yeah, so mine said municipal bond analysis. It, yeah, nothing to do with the bond, that's just what the tab was in, in somewhere, so. And then the last. Not least, well, we, well, I'll start off with city engagement. Um. We've been meeting with the city of Bingen and, and we were able to do a letter of support for their curb grant loan uh application that they're going to be applying for, that's for the water project down in Bingen. Um, in addition to that, they're also looking at, um, hopefully I'm saying this correctly, uh, so Krista, the city manager of Bingen, she can yell at me later. The economic development planning component, there's a, there's a portion of planning within curb that's just basically for planning purposes and economic development, and I'm going to be assisting with her on applying for that grant, that timeframe is going to be October, and so we're starting to accumulate all the information that we need for that application.
This is a follow-on to what was discussed at the EDA Board Meeting, we requested nine funds, if they do a seventy-five thousand planning project first.
Do they have a uh map of the coverage areas where they're planning on coverage for this?
Uh, so they, yes, they do, but it's, we weren't able to really print it out, I could have done a web capture of it, but as you look at it with the fifty-nine towers that they have on there with the circles and everything, they, it's not a very easily uh digestible map, it's not, not very easily read. Which is why we just did the Excel sheet for you.
Eventually, I'm going to get some kind of a map of.
Yes, eventually. Um, and then uh Clicktack Mill Site. So since our last update meeting, we had a meeting on May fifteenth to discuss the constraints and liabilities of the site with ecology. Um, it should be noted in attendance, uh, we had a representative from the Yakima Nation Fisheries and Ecology as well as Mid Columbia Fisheries, uh, we had some pointed questions about disturbing the concrete that's out there. Um, and Ecology basically said they would contact their lawyer, give us their opinion and we would relay that to the county and, and Mr. David Quinnell. And what's also very interesting was the environmental covenants that applied to the site is really just that, that, kind of that southern part of where that building was, but it doesn't, the environmental covenants apparently doesn't apply to where all the concrete's at. So, but how that interplays and whether or not it does or doesn't, where that, hence the lawyer from Ecology giving us an opinion on that. Um, and then it was heavily suggested by Ecology, um, Ali from the Brownfield Planning, uh, or the Brownfield Program, uh, that we pursue an integrated planning grant. So this would be kind of a twofold or two-part grant, the first part would be drilling of vertical and horizontal underneath the con- concrete to see what exactly the the uh contamination level is, and then the second part of that would be for land reuse planning and community planning slash outreach, so it'd be kind of a two-part grant for that. Um, that's what they're heavily suggesting, either way, I'm, I'm going to be working um, very closely with Jeff Hunter from Public Works on, on how we move forward with that, because I know that there's a PUD component to that as well as a uh, state parks and trail portion, and that goes into, I don't know if, if everyone wants to see this, this map, I'll just go ahead and hand it out. So this is a.
So I, I get the grant to drill through the concrete to see what's down there, the problem is what if you find something you don't want to find? There's going to be a grant to clean that up.
Yeah, so um, and, and I got to thank uh Dave for this, uh. So there is some agreements out there that can potentially help shield us and protect us against liabilities potentially that we need to do some research on.
Right, just, I think, I think right now that, you know, there's some question, have we looked everywhere? And if the counties may contemplate uh taking that out of the trust position that the property is now in, where you, where we've got shielding from liability to take ownership of it in some way or do some work down there, is to do some further exploration specifically under some of the cement there and make sure we're not biting into some, what Richard's talking about, so, you know, how do we continue to protect the county and and also you, Canal can, can advise on that, but you know, there may be a couple of routes. One is just prospective purchaser agreement is, if that is available to the county, that's what they're using down at the aluminum smelter site, for example.
Right.
Uh, you agreed to do some additional cleanup, there's environmental benefit and and you get the uh contamination quantified and a cleanup path forward and you can get an agreement that you're not liable for legacy contamination, but it's to further try to make sure the county's covered there inside this.
I just heard, I don't know if you'd heard it, Richard, that Maquette just got Brownfield cleanup money. Okay, Dave, Dave's shaking his head.
Yeah, I have. They've applied for it, I don't know if they got it yet.
Yeah, I'm not sure if they've gotten it, but I haven't spoken with Jessica.
I'd heard about it and it sounded like it was awarded, but I didn't hear if it was for Washington and Oregon or just Oregon, was where my confusion.
It is for both, but I believe it's more for a community planning type act- activities, not necessarily for.
Yeah, and, and the, I believe Clicktack Mill was in the, in the applicant, I think we're covered, not whatever it's going to have available.
Okay.
As they applied for it, we only, the counties only got really one property, it was Clicktack Mills, so I, I have spoken with Jessica. Um, and, and I will also add that the working group, we've also been in contact with State Park Senior Planners, Andrew Fielding and Brian Patnood um, about that Clicktack Trail Crossing over Snyder Creek, so the map I just, I just gave everyone was the uh they're proposing potentially to move that um, that trail to south, so it's much closer to the highway. So, and you can see kind of where it is right now and, and the, the dotted line is, is where they would like to potentially have it, so we're still, I mean, this is an idea that's proposed out there, we're still working through it, we, we have a number of meetings that are ranging for the month of June and July in this regard, so. And then last but not least, would you like to touch on?
Yeah, maybe touch on affordable housing. Uh, as you're aware, we have a Affordable Housing Fund, there's two revenue streams for that, one revenue stream is uh document filing fee, we get uh on the order of fifteen to forty thousand dollars a year in that. Uh, the no, a hundred and fifty or so thousand it accumulated in that fund and in nineteen seven, uh, twenty seventeen uh had a rounded grants for affordable housing projects uh that were done by Columbia Cascade Housing, Habitat Humanity, et cetera, et cetera. Uh, that is built up to about a hundred and forty thousand again. A few years ago, in twenty twenty, uh, WAGAP and Programs for Peaceful Living had uh Regina Mossbrucker gotten some funding for a domestic violence shelter. Uh, the Commissioners had supported that project and said they would, the county would provide about forty thousand dollars over a period of three to four years for that, and then COVID hit, so everything's been pushed back, we've been talking to uh, uh Columbia uh Programs for Peaceful Living, we need to get that funding to them. We do have a process for that back in twenty seventeen, an enforceable housing advisory board was set up and it recommended the grants out of that tranche money that was available, and it hasn't met set, met since. The only grants really we've issued since that time have been to uh the Shelter Care Program, which was one of the grants was recommended. Every year they come back for ten thousand dollars, we've got the grant agreement for uh, for this year, we haven't got the invoice yet for ten thousand. Um, but the Commissioners were thinking that the payment of, uh, to the uh Programs for Peaceful Living uh would come from this Affordable Housing Fund, as I look at that, it does look like it's one of the allowed uses under emergency shelter and we can fund operation of emergency shelter in looking at the scope of work that uh, uh Programs for Peaceful Living, I proposed, there were capital projects in it, you know, they've got a mortgage to pay, et cetera, et cetera, I don't think we can cover that, so we need to get with them and get a little more specific on what scope of work, if we're going to use those, that funding source. And then get that to the uh, reconstitute that advisory committee and get that process through them.
What's that, forty thousand or forty thousand over three years?
Over, over three years, it contemplated twenty thousand the first year and two years, at ten thousand each.
Okay.
Is that shelter actually still moving forward and getting built?
My understanding is operational.
Okay.
They had one in Goldendale, this might be, I don't know where it is.
It was supposed to be here, but I've never heard anything about it.
They, they had a place identified and it fell through and my understanding is they've got something going now.
Huh, because I, I heard they had a place and it fell through, but I haven't heard they got anything going, so.
Maybe we can have them come in and.
Because that was going to be, my question is, yeah, I have no problem giving it to you, but shouldn't you have to get it going before I give you money, but if they've already got it going, then I'll honor the previous boards, you know?
Especially given that for emerg- to fund an emergency shelter, it can only be for the operational, it says for operating an emergency shelter, so. So we have got that, the other thing with that, within that fund is another revenue stream. We get uh a portion of the state's sales and use tax sent back to us, we can get up to fifty-four thousand dollars a year because it's capped on the amount of revenue received in twenty nineteen, I believe it was. Um, the cities, the three cities opted to have the county serve as the fiduciary agent, if you will, for that whole pot of money for all the cities and the, and the county. We have an agreement with them, we will sit down and develop a process uh for distributing those revenues. Uh, I think Richard's got a meeting set up tentatively for what, June sixth?
I think June sixth or June eighth with the city of Bingen and we, we're going to wait till the city, the mayor of White Salmon gets back from vacation.
Yeah, so we need to get a meeting.
But they're going to get their share, their incorporated funds, but the county's still going to have its own piece.
No, it's all coming into one pot.
Right, but they had the choice to do their own and then the county would have had their non-incorporated own pot.
Right.
So I'm trying to make sure there's four entities, three cities and one county.
Right.
I want to make sure when it gets dispersed, there's four entities.
And that's, I think that's, that's one of.
I don't know that all of them feel that way.
Yeah, I think that's, that's part of the discussion, how does, how does that get distributed? Um, and it's not like it's going to be money going to Bingen, it's going to be, you know, WAGAP or Columbia Cascade Housing apply for a project and they would get a contract with the county and somehow we need a, a board, you know, and the discussion back um, at the beginning of this was it could be done under the auspices of the EDA because the three cities and county sit at that table and we could form a subcommittee that looks for affordable housing and vet the applications through that, and that would provide, could provide a venue for that.
This is the same funding that Jonathan was looking for, right, for Rhine Village?
Uh he was looking at the uh. You know, the document filing fee, because we didn't have that process up and running.
Right, but it's still that same funding, Sean, right? Yeah. And we never did anything of that.
No, we did. We told him no.
Yeah, that's what.
Yeah.
That was the outcome. As I recall.
I. I mean, I trust the process. I worry that the process is going to turn into. The citizens in the unincorporated areas subsidizing. Housing uh for people in the city. Uh and the city's fighting that they not only want their share, but they want some other city shares as well, and they want the unincorporated county share. Uh so we'll we'll fight that battle when we get there and.
And and we're going to be sitting down with three mayors. I would suggest that it would be entirely appropriate if one of the board members wants to sit in on that discussion and.
Worst case scenario, we can just divide it up next year and they can apply for their own and get their own and then they can only have their own and then I don't have to worry about it anymore.
Yeah.
So that was a previous board's decision, so.
Mark, just wraps it up for economic, unless you got.
Thank you, Richard.
Okay, for natural resources. Uh the legality grant program, the surfboard funding rounds moving. Through fairly smoothly. Uh we had three projects. We had uh the site visit by the state's uh technical review panel. The feedback from the panel is that two of the projects are green lighted. So they they have no issues or questions. One of the projects has questions. That's the land trust's project and. And looking at them, I think they should be able to fairly easily address those, but we'll see. So um. Uh most of it's clarification, you know, is it thirteen structures? Is it fourteen or whatever? So so there needs to be some clarifications made by the land trust. Uh the Commissioner Anderson uh will be coordinating the uh technical committee committee meeting on the sixth. On the eighth, when they review the projects and uh score them. We're Jennifer is prepared, you know, we've got Google Sheets. This process was used last year. So the members of the technical committee are getting those and we'll get them scored uh during the meeting. Uh the citizens review committee meets on the fifteenth. Uh again, Commissioner Anderson will coordinate that uh uh meeting. Or facilitate it. Uh C R C members will be provided with Google Sheets via email, but they are being encouraged to show up in person. And uh we'll be checking out to make sure there aren't any good issues trying to use the Google Sheets if you're not on a Google. Uh don't operate in a Google world like the county does. And then we're sort of got the process laid out after that. It's submitted project by surfboard. There's some due dates. I think last year we've got a lot of materials. You can take a look at what was submitted last year. I had a phone conversation with the upper, I mean, with the Yakima and lower Columbia Funding Boards last. Last week, uh it we don't have a certain number in terms of funding available. We'll see. We'll be able to cover what's about a hundred, a million one hundred and fifty thousand asked from this area. Uh but uh. The lower Columbia informed us that they don't have many projects this year and some of the projects they do have are projects of concern. They may have enough surplus to send up upwards of a hundred, uh four hundred thousand our way. Uh but that's uncertain at this point and they'll keep us informed. So I think we have a.
No projects?
No, they have projects, but they have a light load of projects relative to usual.
Wow.
At least in terms of the ask, and I haven't seen their list. Uh you know, we discussed that uh we'll have a new person coming on board here. Uh Yakima. Fish Recovery Board has offered to us provide any assistance we need in terms of. Addressing the questions the new identity coordinator may have, so we've got some support there. Uh R C L Replication Conservation Office is is aware we're. Changing jockeys in the mid middle of the race, so uh they're prepared uh. To provide some additional clarifications and support if if needed, but I think we can get through this, particularly given, you know, we've got some good examples from. Past years of what we need to submit. Uh we're currently working on getting the grant together for the coming biennium. Uh funding is, this is for our operational grant. Funding's going up to ninety thousand. It was what, sixty thousand this year? So uh that'll be helpful. Uh Jennifer and I've worked with uh on reviewed the proposed grant agreement, got. Or scope of work and that material's been provided back to R C O and. You know, we should be getting, if not this week, in the next couple of weeks, getting that grant board to consider for the coming biennium.
That's great.
Fine.
That's great. Extra dollars. Was there much change in the uh deliverables?
No. No, pretty much the same thing. Okay, uh another project we're working on is uh Ride Butler Creek. Uh you know, we've discussed this before. We're looking at a couple of. Freaks up in the Simcoe Mountains, potentially provide sites for uh an in-stream water storage project. We've been doing uh data collection uh contracted with the Conservation District to do uh data collection up there. Got an eighty thousand dollar grant. We have got, let's see, where are we? We've got about forty four, no, that's not it. We've got twenty five thousand of that left for the basin yield analysis work. We've got about three thousand dollars in it for county staff time. The budget for the field collection work is exhausted, so. I need to fund that uh. Work. I don't think we will be able to get additional funding out of college on this. Um I have in my budget, in in the natural resources budget, about twenty nine thousand. I put about thirty thousand in that budget every year to handle projects that come up during the year. Uh that money is still there. Uh I'd suggest we look at that. I understand from Lauren, it's going to would cost about sixty five hundred. To get us through the end of this water year, which is October. Uh he proposes at that time to do a preliminary basin yield analysis because of the issues they've had up there with. Stream flow gauges getting blown out, et cetera. The. Data are not ideal. And uh based on that preliminary analysis, determine whether we should go for another. Year of monitoring, which would be about ten thousand. So that's where.
What is the purpose of all this monitoring?
To find out about how much water is coming off of that. Uh out of those drainages in the year. If we put a a dam in it, you know, are we going to get? Do we have the supply coming off the snowpack?
Are we, is the county going to put a dam in it?
Uh we have not determined who would do that yet. Potentially the county or some other entity. It's just, can we do it? I mean, we've got, water is.
You want to get a little bit more about why why we put a dam in for Commissioner Christopher and what what we've looked at in the past for that?
Right, we we have done a number of studies over the last twenty years trying to look at. Uh water storage opportunities, because water supply is getting increasingly difficult to get. Uh right now in the Little Click-Attack Basin, it's dependent on snow melt in the Simcoe's. Uh we have issues with stream flow in the Little Click-Attack River. Right now, there is not an in-stream flow on that. We're able to get, for example, permit exempt wells uh drilled. But that day's coming to an end at some point and it may be. Five years, but it's coming and the storage project, it takes a long time. To do the studies and line things up to get something built. So uh. I mean, it's like a hundred fold or better increase. If we look at the summer flows in the Little Click-Attack. This would be could be a hundred fold increase in in what is there in the summer, so it would be. Store the water in the winter when it's available and then release it in summer when there are low flows, so there's water in Little Click-Attack River for fish. And people are able to drill wells out there and. Count on this as mitigation. So I guess the question is, uh I would like to proceed or have. Richard and Lynn proceed with getting uh a a contract amendment with the the Conservation District. Make sure that that's be able to handle some additional money and then look at uh playing money out of. County money out of my budget to fund that.
I I need more information on the project. I need a full scope on the project. I need to know. Is the city of Goldendale asking for this? Is some other entity asking for this? Are we trying to be in the water rights? Uh ten years down the road. I I know nothing about it, so I I cannot vote yes or no.
Okay.
Till I get a full briefing on what the hell is going on. So two years first to her, so yeah, sorry.
I think it's more long range and we've been working on it.
Right, it was, I mean, this project's been been going on. This specific project in twenty seventeen, we started doing. Uh studies of opportunities for to do water storage in two thousand and four. And these, you know, the opportunities just sort of narrow and narrow and narrow and this is where we are.
And I I'd like to see as fast as we can make sure that we can move forward and complete what we've been working on. So we're ready for the next phase.
Right. And today, all of this has been with ecology grant dollars, no county dollars. This is the first time county dollars has gone.
But will it be the last time?
It depends on whether something's built.
So I don't need more information considering I've worked on the project and you've. Brought it up and let us know about it over the last couple of years during the meetings when things were getting blown out and as it was getting pushed pushed back. And. We are a long ways into this project. It should have been done in twenty twenty one, but we've had issues with the stream flow gauges and costs continue to go up and. And uh I'd say that that's a small price to pay for the information that we're going to get. We have continued to narrow this down on these storage projects. We were talking about using Spring Spring Creek for one for a long time and then we looked higher and higher in the basin. And I think that uh that you are reading the T V's absolutely correctly that. In the future, when in-stream flow rules are going to get set, we're going to be much like the Skagit County. Uh where you can no longer drill wells anywhere that's in continuity with the Skagit River. By doing that, that would completely stop all development within Click-Attack County, within the central part of the county and that. We need to do everything we can to plan and prepare for that. Uh this is a very small price to pay for trying to ensure that. That the residents of Click-Attack County will continue to have access to water. So I I have no problem with it. Uh it is in your budget. Uh you don't need a uh change in your grants. Or anything else, um I'm fine with it.
And I agree, um it's been a long range thing for a long, long time. Even when I was back in the water world, we knew. Less and less water all the time was coming and we've made these long range plans today and I'd like to see it finished so we can move and it doesn't just touch. City of Goldendale. It impacts a lot of people. A lot of different ways that we use water. And we have to know what we have or what we can produce so that we can offset the regulations that are probably coming.
Right.
We have to have the documentation.
I mean, this is in the same order of what we've been doing with well monitoring for the last. Bundle of years is trying to create a a record so that we we can actually know what we do and don't have. And so when we do get to comprehensive planning, we know what's available and what's out there.
Yeah, it's called best available signs.
Right.
And if we've got it.
Like, you got two votes.
Okay.
That's all you need, two against zero because I didn't vote.
Okay.
Uh again, I have to actually know about a project before I sign off on taxpayer money about it.
Yeah. I think I'll I'll I will move forward then with letting the Conservation District know that I I plan on doing that. Funding and continuing to do work. And I think we'll. Set up having a a discussion of what that project is. And maybe I can get you some some reports in the interim so that you can see how we got where we are.
Okay.
You're going to get that done in two days on top of everything else you have?
I'll get it eventually from someone.
Yeah.
If the project is still around eventually.
I would also like to say um thank you for your sixteen years of dedicated service to Click-Attack County. Um you have done so many things for this county that most people have no idea about. So I know this is your last meeting, but it has not gone unseen and unheard.
It's been a pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Dave.
All right, two oh five unfinished business, continued discussion of adult probation staffing requests. So two weeks ago, Mr. Anderson, you wanted us to hold this over till today and so that we can. Take a vote and know where we are, so that's why we're here.
Well, it would have been really interesting for just me to vote on something. That's Laurie, wasn't it?
Verbal approval.
Uh it also had bu- budget implications. Um it was also mentioned last week when we talked about the budget. And it was brought up with regards to the youth center that there's a time and a place for for adding time and expenses. Um so I think that needs to be taken into account. It was not part of the supplemental budget. It was just a asked for. Uh with regards to um. This office, so I think it's also, we need to have that conversation and now that Lori's here. Where, what do you, how do you feel about this?
I still have a very different view about it. It's various and Courtney did send us. Sheet today. Did you get it on your email? It was a concise ask, which was a good way to look at it. Um it is very much two separate issues. Um my biggest problem that I'm still struggling with is um. And I was not here when it happened. But I see that so many times going forward about being organized. Uh staying within the parameters of what a job description says. When we've migrated from that, we've seen ourselves get into stipends and different things where we've had to add extra things. This job description. Speaks to the paperwork that goes with the job. So I'm having trouble separating out adding more and adding more hours when the job description is agreed upon. That's what it's about. I did get an explanation that there is expanded with that in that. Probably the department head or the director has a more technical side to that paperwork that comes through. Getting it ready to go to the court and there's more knowledge that has to be applied by the person doing the job than just the. Smaller amount of paperwork, but the technical things that have to be answered for the court and turned into the court have to be prepared in a certain way. And Courtney has overseen that and helped with that for now. But if that is the shift that's going to happen and the person in that position is going to take that on too. I just want to ensure that we. Acknowledge that in the job description and we also put an end date on that because I don't want Courtney to. Keep giving up time and effort for paperwork coming in that she has to keep producing to give to the courts. The person in that position needs to understand how to do that job, get it done and turn it in. Is that making sense?
What do you mean by an end date?
Courtney has uh picked up this ball for. Courtney has, uh, picked up this ball for a year now, almost or so. Uh, she's been doing it for a long time. It has came in with the ask of let's transition this. And that's what it needs to be a transition. I know they're looking at another transition possibly if case loads increase. And there's more work that maybe in a year it'll transition again. I don't want to see her impacted for another year carrying this ball. If we are going to spend the money and say, yes, the hours and yes, the money, then I would like to have assurances that. And within the job description, they can fully do that job, say, within 60 days. With proper training from Courtney. Um, I don't want handholding for a year saying, well, we just, we just aren't ready to do this paperwork and pass it on ourselves now. Um, responsibility for the job position is what I'm saying.
So are you in favor of it or not?
Really tough for me. Um. Looking as is with the job description, no, I am not. Because that wasn't the definition within the job description. But what it migrated into. Um, how do we now unwire this so that Courtney is not doing a job that actually? What I see belongs within the job description.
I just wanted to clarify, um, the current job description for the litter crew supervisor doesn't do any paperwork for the community service. Uh, clientele's that's completely separate. And so right now, even the litter crew supervisors having to hand off, um, reports to myself or, um, our case manager. To verify what we need to do next before it goes to the court. So ideally every course, we would like it to do things the same way, but they don't. And they don't, the documents are, if there's a box not checked, we have to do something different based on that document. So it's very precise and we have to very, be very clear about making sure that this order allows us to do a bench probation request. Or does it? And then therefore we have to do a memo. And so there's. Different things we have to do based on the case and the court. That's where the current supervisor, litter crew supervisor has to filter it through myself or the case manager. Now, the case manager, manager has this like bundle, a huge bundle of community service clients he has to monitor as well. We want the litter crew supervisor to absorb that. That would be an added duty to the current litter, uh, job description. Not written in to do any of the community service stuff, completely separate. Ideally, I would like by January one, um. But then that litter crew supervisor would know how to do all the paperwork and be specific in each case. And under looking at those records and saying, okay, this is what I need to do with this one, this one not, because this one wasn't checked. You know, being very precise in those. If that person is able to do that, I'd like to look in moving that position into the litter crew community service coordinator position, which is. Uh, which was a job, um, position within our department many years ago. So there's already a job description for that. Um, and it just bumps her up, uh, a pay grade. So it wouldn't be necessarily an increase in funds because she would stay in the same. Pay step, uh, dollar amount that she gets now. It's just up a pay grade and down. So that there's an opportunity for growth in that pace. Great. Does that make sense?
So this is the first we're hearing about this, right?
That, that's my futuristic goals.
That doesn't have a budget implication.
Right now, I'm just looking at this person absorbing more duties that is not in the job description. Moving that into that job description. So that.
Go up a pay grade. And I'm just clarifying. If you go up a pay grade, but instead of a step five, you're down to a step three or whatever. It's essentially just matching the same pay that you were at below it.
Right.
Within pennies.
Right.
It's not a budget implication more than potentially pennies.
Correct. That's, that's the hope. If the, if the current employee could, and it, it show me that there's that ability to do that job. Correctly and thoroughly.
So the person currently doesn't do those duties with regards to file, filling out the paperwork and everything else?
Not to its full extent, no.
And is that part of the job description as it currently is? Is that a duty that they're supposed to be doing?
No.
So all they're really doing is just the litter crew and filling out the forms.
Fill out the forms and then they report it to the, to myself with the case manager. And then, um, if they successfully complete their hours, there's a memo she fills out to say they completed their hours. And then we do the rest to the court.
So essentially out of thirty five hours, you have literally 30 hours in a vehicle picking up trash. And five hours doing all paperwork administrative scheduling and everything for the week is in the five.
And grant reporting.
And grant report.
And logging all that grant data.
And only 30 hours is actually paid for by the grant. I just would like an answer to this, whether it's yes, no, or indifferent. Because I feel very bad for our employee who's probably wasted more than $5,000 in staff hours arguing for this for six months without being told an answer, yes, no, or never. Um, so I'd like to get it over with and put it to bed. So there's none on our agenda every two weeks while we jerk an employee around. Uh, making them fill out more forms. Very frustrating for me to sit on the sidelines through that.
I know this has a very personal take. It's pretty obvious by how hard you're squeezing your little ball.
No, that's frustration on. The board's part because personally, yes, it's personal and. I don't really care what the answer is. Part of me really hopes it's no. So it's not. A yes or a no for me. I just want it done.
So what I would also state is that this isn't just, uh, a request for one individual employee in my office. Really, it's, it's, it's about streamlining the duties within my office because, um. Myself and our, my case manager were overloaded. We're doing more than we probably should. And just. Just a lot of work and we got, we know, we know a storm's coming with casework. It's gonna, it's, it's coming with new laws changing. And so I'm just trying to streamline, um, our office so that we're working more efficiently, um, and effectively. And this is where I am able to. Financially at, come to you, like, it's not a huge ask. Um. My. Work up for if, if you were to approve it for June 1st to the remainder of the year, it's only an ask of like less than $5,500. Extra than what my current budget supports. Um. I didn't ask it in my original supplement because I didn't know that that was an option at the moment, at that time I had already came to you and it wasn't. It was kind of a no at that point. And so that's why I didn't ask for it. Um, I'm not going to, I'm not going to come to you and, uh, do a supplemental request without. Knowing that you guys are going to support it first. I didn't feel like that was appropriate. Um. I would. I wouldn't do that. I would ask for permission first before I. Come to you and try to, I'm not, I'm not sneaky. I'm not going to like sneak something through. So I definitely want to be transparent. I feel like this is something that, um, an easy fix to help. Pretty tremendously. Um.
So here, now I have to clarify in my mind again because the, the paperwork evidently wasn't. As I understood the paperwork to be or the position. So the paperwork we're talking about is your coworker in your office that reviews. Tell me the name of the paperwork again, uh, which reports they're working on.
So.
They're trying, you're trying to shift from that person over to the.
The community service. So we have community service clients that can't do litter crew.
Okay.
Okay. Um, our litter crew supervisor is based on the job description, um, is only doing.
Litter.
Outgoing, doing litter crew pickup and then, um, calling and doing the paperwork for the litter crew individuals. Me service clients, we're having to fact check nonprofit agencies, make sure they're approved before they start doing community service. Get them their time sheets, make sure they're reported back in time so we can log it in on time and get it to the court. Those are duties extra that our case manager is doing that he really needs to be spending that time individually with our probation clients that are high risk. Um, there's a lot of, you know, mental health, uh. Drug affected individuals right now. Um, and so, uh, he needs to be spending that time with them, not spending. This extra hours on community service. That's something that I believe our litter crew supervisor can absorb.
Does that help clear things up?
That, that clears it up more for me because it wasn't, it wasn't at all the paperwork I thought was shifting.
Okay.
Um, I, I still have concerns about the longevity of hands on. For you or your coworker versus handing it over. You're ready to do it, get it done. A timeframe of when that person, uh, can actually accomplish this goal and be paid for it and do that work.
And I have that on my end.
Yeah, I don't want to see a year. If we approve something that, uh, this is almost like for me adjusting the, um, job description. Because you're adding another duty.
Right. Which I, I've worked with HR about that too. We're just adjusting like one. It's like one or two job duties from the case manager to the litter crew supervisor. Um. It's not a significant amount of change of duties. Doesn't appear that way, but there is, um, and the deadline that would, that would come, I believe more appropriately come on my end, um, based on. There, how quickly they are to speed up. And if it doesn't work out, then I will scale back and we'll figure out another option.
So my next question, now that you've told us your, your long-term plan, so we're going to take this from 35 to 40 hours.
Okay.
And in that 40 hours, you think that this person can continue to do exactly what they're doing on, um. The litter pickup and scheduling and they're going to be at five hours to do, to do the community service side, which it's both community service. That's not a big deal. But then your goal next year is to also have them then fill out the paperwork to submit to the courts and everything else. If they're working a 40 hour week, we're already, and where are they going to get the extra time in order to do that? Because I'm trying to figure out how to take that load off of you.
Understood. So. Maybe if I could be more precise, litter crew supervisor, if she is doing the key service court, um, monitoring as well. She's fact checking everything. This is true and correct, right? She's going to do a memo, like, yes, they completed everything. And then she's, uh, she's going to give that to the case manager, um, or myself. And we're going to review it, the court order, which is simply just looking at it. And then there's a couple of extra steps. Um, and if everything looks all right, then either, then her next step would be. Do I send a memo or do I do a request for bench probation and make sure, you know, the correct cause numbers are on it and it's going to the right court? And those documents. There's little, um, particulars that are very important that need to be looked at. If she's already done all the work of making sure that this hours are all legit, it does, it wouldn't be a huge amount of extra time. To fill out the correct paperwork and submit it to the court, fax it or drop it off. Um. Really, it's just myself and the case manager proofreading, making sure the work is correct and then telling them. Okay, now do the request for bench or do the, do a memo and then we'll sign off and submit it to the court. That I'd like to eventually move on to her so that we're not having to do that. Um, but I'd like to make sure that. She's not, we've had it to at, at a time when, um, Mr. Crow first started doing both, um. Up, sorry, coming back onto our office as a case manager and doing community service, not knowing how adult probation works versus his history with juvenile. Um, accidentally requesting bench on somebody, bench probation when they're not ready because. He's thinking is, oh, they did their hours. They're done. Request bench. Well, he doesn't know. He should, he could have done a better job at looking through the notes and double checking the file to see that there's other stuff that's not done yet that he could. He shouldn't have done that. So then we're in a panic to try to reverse it, which is very difficult. So that's what I'm trying to prevent is if I could oversee it for till the end of the year to make sure that. She's got it streamlined. Everything's good. I feel like she. Doesn't have a problem getting it done correctly, moving forward, then I would like to get that off my desk.
I, I guess I want to speak for a second and remind the board that this is a position under another elected official. That that elected official manages these employees and we should not, as a board, be micromanaging these employees. We are in charge of the piggy bank. So the answer is yes and no, not telling them how they should manage their employees is my recommendation. Going forward with all elected officials, not just these.
And I'm not micromanaging anyone's employees. I'm looking how we're applying those dollars and where that's going to get us.
And I think in order to make a decision, you need to understand how it's working in order and, and I, I hear what you're saying, Commissioner Zoller. With that. Do you feel like you have enough information to make a decision?
Um. The other factor was, um, we've talked about it before and I know these are two separate subjects, but. In a perfect world, had you found that third person, this would stay within your office and then you'd be dividing up these duties anyhow so that you guys could back check those to go to the court. There wouldn't be such a big burden if there weren't just two of you. Is that correct?
Right.
Or would you still be looking?
I mean. It's hard to say about another, fill in another case, our other case manager or make it one because, um, there's no funding available for that right now. So it's hard to even consider that at this point. Um. I mean, I, do I think that it might come up in the future? Probably. I think numbers change all the time and it's like a roller coaster. And those are numbers that are unpredictable because that comes from. Our communities, our law enforcement, our prosecutors, our courts. Um, those are outside of my control. Um, I don't know what's going to happen. Uh, legislators change things all the time that affect us negatively and positively. So, um, with the new legislation changes coming up, uh, my best guess is not, our numbers are going to increase. And so this is my ask of, well, here's me trying to prepare my office to get ready for it. I need to, I need to be. Skip where I can with duties. Like, okay, if I can free up a few hours here and there with each position, then maybe we can all. Do a little bit better. With what we got. But I can't wait any more, any longer right now.
And I'm not micromanaging and I don't know your paperwork or each piece of it and how much time it takes to do it. But what I'm concerned about is I keep hearing, we're going to shift it, but it's still coming back and you're going to, you're going to touch it and you're going to look through it. And it's still going to be on your plate for the next year.
But I think that's also a supervisor's job is to. While, while they're learning, I, I have to supervise and make sure that they're doing the job correctly. I don't think that's necessarily, um.
I don't, I don't see what we're alleviating for you then.
Because the work, I don't have to do the work. She's doing the legwork. I'm just supervising, double checking it before she submits it. Does that make sense? Like she would submit to me and I'm like, that's not correct. Do it this way. That kind of supervising or that kind of fact checking.
You would not be emailing and calling the clients and scheduling their volunteer hours and any of that kind of stuff?
No. I would not be having to check the file to make sure we got the rules and the agreements and the waivers signed. I would not have to be calling the clients saying, hey. I would not have to be calling the client saying, hey, I have, we haven't seen any, any hours reported for the month. Are you doing it or not? If you don't get it done by this time, we're going to terminate you and send it back to court and you're looking at jail time. She would also be potentially looking at having to, you know, support her, her, her work in court eventually. But that comes with her job duties now. Like something happens on the litter crew, uh, that requires, um. And like an incident reporter, even a, um. Hours taken away because they violated the rules. That could potentially require her to come to court and testify based on what she saw, like I can't necessarily. Speak on her behalf in court if an attorney wants to test, uh, swear and under oath. So those are things that she's already doing, but she would have to more of that. Just because of the numbers she would be absorbing of cases for community service and litter crew.
So I have a question of HR. Where you're adding extra duties to a position, extra defined, specific duties now that I understand them. Do you adjust that in the paperwork in the files somewhere so that if this person quits or goes away and we hire new, then they know walking in, they absolutely have. These duties and that one is still on there.
Yes, when this was first discussed, there were two lines that were. Okay. And it was those two duties and only those two. And so they would be removed from one and added to the other and it wouldn't. It wouldn't make a reclassification or the additional duties wouldn't require any, any other. Uh, grade placement or changes or anything.
Well.
Now, how do you feel?
Um, I, I feel that Courtney does know her position and she does know what she needs relief from. I am more confident because it is denoted on the job description. And in case something happens to that person, we aren't left in the lurch again, we actually are hiring that person and they're going to do these things. My only loss still is I think a year is a long time. I would like to know that someone coming into a position can do their job. And can be monitored for a month or so and we can move them on, but, um, that's going to be up to you and the judges and. And I think if it relieves the burden for you and this is your scope where you see you're moving towards, um, I could support that.
And I'd just like to say, I know how hard you're working and I know how much you guys have on your plates and. We've talked in, you know, in, in my office about how much you have to do and with the changes that have happened in the department over the last year and a half and with the soon to be retirement and. That training, um, I'm happy to give you any ability you can in order to alleviate some of that. So I personally, and I've had my mind made up for a while, but I wanted to make sure everybody, Lori was here and understood. And so I would move forward with the change in the job classification and the additional five hours so that you can get that added to the next supplemental. It's a small increase, but it hopefully will have a big impact on your, uh, your budget, or not your budget, but your office.
Yes. I believe it will be, and thank you, I appreciate it. And there's nobody better in my office to come to you asking for help than myself. I've done every single position in the department, other than actually being on the work group, but. I did community service monitoring.
I thought you were going to say you, you were on community service at one point.
No, I never wanted to get up as early as Steve did.
I paid my way out.
Does that mean, did that mean you spent time in jail?
Oh. I'm a petty criminal. I got somebody wet once.
Thank you.
I think you have your, yeah. No, on a personal note on that one, I would prefer to know.
I can change, I can change it if you want, I was.
But for Courtney, I appreciate.
I had my mind made up till you said, now you want to know.
Probably do need to vote on that at some point.
We will. You're getting verbal. But you need to vote right now.
Not why I'm here. Uh, if I may, I'd like to remind the commissioners tomorrow, Marty Hudson's retirement from three to five, thirty three years, I think, thirty two years, so. I want to make sure you're reminded of that and the public's, everybody's invited to celebrate a career well done.
Yes, it is. I unfortunately will be in the Dallas, so, but if I get back early, I will try to make sure I swing in. Um, we are way late for our two fifteen. Uh, which is public hearing that continued, uh, continued close to further public comment to reconsider approval of Sherman. Substantial development permit and shoreline conditional use permit. Uh, number SH two zero two two dash zero three pit site trailhead project. Um, staff is here, so I'm sure she's got news.
Um, well, I, on May fif, May sixteenth, the board approved SH twenty twenty two oh three with additional conditions and asked staff to prepare. The permit and with updated findings for signature. At such time, the permit will be forwarded to Department of Ecology for final approval. Did you have a chance to take a look?
I was going to say, did that permit with the, um. Conditions, was that in our packet and did I just miss a reading through our packet?
It's.
Really?
Yeah.
I don't know, I, I, that might be the first thing I've missed.
Yeah, and everything was out.
Or nineteen, eighteen, every condition that you mentioned is, was in it. I worded it as best that I could.
Thank you for that. I, I completely missed it. So there, off of thirteen.
Should it be southeast?
Which number are you looking at?
I'm looking at, uh, number fourteen.
Oh.
Uh, very far away here.
Southeast. Maybe more east?
Huh, I guess it is southeast right there. Nope, you're right. I had it twisted in my head.
And I also did, um. Instead of refer to the letter from Public Works, I included their conditions in the permit, so it was a little more easily accessible. For the commissioners. That was on number nine. Condition.
Is that how you recall it? Or is there something else?
No, I didn't bring that paperwork in. Well, I don't, I don't like the way fourteen's written because it says they're going to consult with Wash Dot. To ensure the public has safety, well, I don't trust Wash Dot, another state agency that does, would have to actually build. The crosswalk or what have you doing there. That's like Fox running the hen house.
That was a difficult one to, to word.
Yeah. That, that's Fox running the hen house. They're going to look at it and go, oh no, it's fine. Until the first, I don't know, three people get hit, then it'd be just like Lyle Sandbar in them, but no, it's fine. So, yeah, I can't get there on that one. Um, I don't have my other.
And we do have, you know.
Um, so either run to my office and get my list or we hold it over, your choice.
Don't run to your office, it's only three o'clock. This is the last thing, hopefully.
I did listen to the recording to make sure I didn't miss any. Items, conditions.
All right, I have no, no concerns here, you didn't get.
Yeah, fourteen was difficult because. Wash Dot is.
I was coming to get you if you left, like I do all the time.
Let's see, it starts on fourteen, thirteen was a condition that private commission added, so fourteen through eighteen.
So I, I guess I'm kind of fine with Wash Dot doing a parking, uh, uh. A traffic study to see if they need to put some kind of light or. The safety of the entrance to the actual pit site, but. I mean, I guess I, I just, again, this is chicken in the, the hen house or fox in the hen house thing to me.
Would, um. You, you notice that it's the applicant is to coordinate with Wash Dot, not to have Wash Dot do it, they're to do their own traffic study. So.
Well, I get it, but it isn't coming before us, it's going, state agency one is talking to state agency two. And we're out of the loop and, you know, wash my back, I'll wash your back and, and, you know.
What I saw, if I can comment, what I saw in the records.
Actually, you can, you recuse yourself, so you can't comment.
Okay.
Just saving you, just saving you.
Okay.
I mean, I can get behind that, but not without the crosswalk. The crosswalk's got to be a mandatory. I'm not leaving it to them because I've seen the pit site. Or I've seen the Lyle Sandbar site and they absolutely refuse to do it, even though it's public safety risk. Uh, so there's no way that Wash Dot is going to want to do it. Especially when you're asking them, hey, do you think you should do this? Of course they're going to say no, because they're the ones that got to pay for it. Um, so I'm fine with the traffic, traffic study about cars pulling into and out of the site. But there's, there's just got to be a crosswalk. I can't, I can't get on it without a cross.
I, I don't know if we have the ability to require the state agency to put a crosswalk against, across a state highway. I would just ask.
We don't, they can either have it or they don't get a permit.
I.
You're trying to get me from a no to a yes, this is a condition on getting from a no to a yes.
I can completely understand if this was a county road where we would have the jurisdiction to say that, but. Uh, if you're requiring a traffic study, which means a traffic engineer will review that. By an outside third party, you have to trust the outside third party who has the license on the line, don't you?
Potentially, if they were doing a study and it was submitting to me for. I mean, technically, the traffic study should have been done as part of the permit and affects part of our ruling. That should be done before we make a decision. Um, not after, not Fox running the hen house after. Um, because I guarantee you their answer is no, no, there won't be any cars, any new traffic, that was already their testimony. We don't think it's going to increase any traffic volume, even though they're building a parking lot five times bigger than this one that's there, but they don't think they're going to get used at all. Uh, they don't think it's a safety risk, apparently pulling across traffic with a horse trailer on a ninety degree corner and we sure didn't look. Because it has nothing to do with the boundaries of the pit site, so nobody looked. On what the safety of pulling a horse trailer is on a ninety degree corner, nobody's looked. Because it doesn't pertain to inside the boundaries of the pit site. So, and now we're going to, here, go ahead and you guys can do your own study on whether you should spend money or not. And we trust your opinion. I, I don't. So it either, that answer needs to either be written in there as a condition. That alleviates any further worry going forward. Or, or I cannot view yes. Because I, yeah, I have no doubt that. You know, I mean, maybe, I mean, maybe people trust state government more than I do. I don't trust their state government, I'm sorry. Uh, in almost no form, fashion or any other.
Well, I, uh, would state as always that, um, I think our employees at the state, federal and local level and professionals and they take their jobs very seriously and they don't try to put people at harm and they don't try to add. Um, liability to themselves or others and there is an entire book on building roads and ingress and egress off of county and state roads.
So why is there no crosswalk at Lyle and why will the state not put sidewalks mandated by their own state law and click. On their side highway. Because they don't want it. The laws don't apply to them.
So I'm sure you were listening.
Yes.
I'm trying to get to something that we can live with. Commissioner Christopher wants to require that there be a crosswalk across the state highway. Can we do that?
That is the question because. We don't really have jurisdiction over a state highway, however, this is our shoreline permit. So this is what we need to forward on to ecology for them to. Review, an African has an opportunity to appeal the decision if they disagree with that, but that's up to them to decide. Today, we are trying to get to a conclusion that we can actually, um, send on to ecology, a decision from our local. Authority, us, the commissioner. And so if fourteen is the only question that we have some issues with. We can certainly make changes to that, to something that Commissioner Christopher is comfortable to sign on behalf of the county. We're trying to phrase it because we don't know if we can actually make that happen. However, this is an intermediate decision, this is not the final decision of the shoreline permit. We still need to get ecologists okay before they actually have. Permission to start the constructions if they choose to. Yeah.
And then the other one I had was eighteen where you have the fences labeled optional. I would like to see better wording that that fence. Uh, goes down, I mean, start to finish of the property, so the horse can't just shortcut around that small fence that was actually in their real print.
On the site plan, that's not optional, that's how we refer to the site plan that's currently on file.
Right.
Um, I did have a, a conversation with the manager, uh, Mr. Patnall. And, and on the phone, he, he agreed to put up the fence. And that's why we asked them to provide like an updated site plan for us to make sure that that is the area. That they currently label optional, but that's actually where they need to put the fence.
Good enough. Yeah, no, to me, it's the, the traffic study, even though I don't necessarily. A hundred percent trust it, but. I can go with it, but I, I, I either need to see the traffic study for the road. Turning in there with horse trailers. Uh, and people saying, oh no, it'll be fine, uh, and no, you don't need a crosswalk before I make a ruling, or I need to see on here. The condition is traffic study to make sure people turning are fine and mandatory cross.
So i- is this, am I understanding this correctly, is we need to add, is required after traffic study? And then you are comfortable to sign that?
No, because I don't want the traffic study to determine if a crosswalk to the pit site trailhead. Uh, to me, there's two things. It's the traffic study to make sure the vehicles turning into the parking lot uh, is safe, and then it needs a crosswalk. Because I honestly think their bathroom is gonna cause users on the river to run across the street. Um, because they're building a bathroom. Um, I think they're gonna get people parking in there, they run across the river. These aren't people that are gonna be using the trailhead. So to me, there, there has to be a crosswalk in the traffic study to decide whether they should build a big elaborate parking lot on a ninety degree corner. Is that is a good traffic safety decision on allowing horse trailers and whatnot to pull into a ninety degree corner?
They did analysis on sightlines and everything else with regards to that corner, did they not, when they designed, when they did it, in order to know, they have to engineer it. In order to engineer it, you have to design it to, to state code. We, just the same way we do with anybody who wants access to a county road.
Approach?
For the approach, you have to prove that it meets all of the, the county requirements and state requirements.
I don't know that we let people put their road approach, driver approach on a ninety degree corner anymore.
Is that, that's a twenty-five mile an hour corner, twenty? That's a twenty. So a ninety degree corner at twenty miles an hour is within the same in every city, it's a ninety degree corner, you actually have a lot better sightlines than on a Y.
So, so we just update the condition, if that's okay, can you, maybe you can read it?
Okay, so the first statement, I believe you're okay with. The applicant is to coordinate with Wash Dot to ensure the public has safe ingress egress from SR one forty-two to the trailhead parking lot. The second statement, prepare a truffles, traffic study to ensure a crosswalk between the pit site trailhead parking lot across SR one forty-two to the existing unimproved parking area to the southeast is to the southeast.
Yeah, no.
Due to.
I can't give that statement, because it still allows them to do a traffic study and decide whether they wanna call.
So he, here's what we, we say.
The crosswalk's either mandatory or canceled.
So the applicant is to coordinate with Wash Dot to prepare a traffic study to ensure the public has safe ingress egress from state route one forty-two to the trailhead parking lot. So that's, so that's first.
That directs the horse trailers turning into the park.
Oh.
The second one is the crosswalk, and it still allows them to do a study and decide for themselves on if they wanna do that. And I don't think they're gonna do that very fairly, so.
And, and then the second one, we, we just say, uh, a crosswalk between the pit site trailhead parking lot across state route one forty-two to the existing unimproved parking area to the safe east is necessary.
Is required.
Required. You do that, I say.
Okay, alright.
So is that okay, we just go upstairs and change and bring it back?
Yep, I'm fine with that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would just like to say, Commissioner Christopher, a little bit of background. Living out in the Houston area, we have another place that's much like this, um, downtown Houston, and the community council has spent almost twenty-something years trying to reduce the speed limit, because it's forty through there, and to get a crosswalk put in. That's been nigh impossible.
Maybe if they want a trailhead, they'll actually do it.
But state DOT doesn't have trailheads.
Can I step down as a commissioner, may I comment as a landowner?
No.
That's a positive, helpful.
Comment.
Well, give me a citizen comment, I've got helpful.
Uh, you can unrecuse yourself and vote if you want. Um, but while you're accused, you should stay out of it. Just trying to save you.
Just trying to help you.
I know.
Have your answers.
I mean, when it all comes down to it, it sounds like whether we uh, do or don't do, or put condition or don't do condition, ecology's gonna have the final say, so anyway. To some.
Yes, only to some of it, right. The parts that actually affect it. I guess the other issue that I have is, is, um, we know people walk across roads, state highways, all over the damn world. Uh, and a lot of times, they don't have a crosswalk. By putting a crosswalk there, do you believe that it's actually gonna make anything safer?
It could.
Because on the other side of the crosswalk, you then have to have sidewalk or something else uh, in order to have a crosswalk. And so I, are you fully aware of what you're asking the requirement to be?
Hundred percent.
May I ask a CIPA question? Has, it's just a general CIPA question?
Sure.
CIPA application question. Maybe I should have did it when Mochi was here. Within the CIPA that's done before any projects that done, isn't there these applications go out for comment, and they get the comment back, and all the studies are done within the CIPA in the first place anyhow?
Yes, but on these, the scope of work is inside the boundary of the project and has nothing to do with anything outside the actual land boundary of the project.
Look at the CIPA.
Um, no, I asked Mochi about that, and they take absolutely nothing into consideration outside the actual property line of the project.
Uh, where is it? We've got it somewhere.
And no, we didn't get to look at the CIPA, because I kept asking on this project to look at the CIPA, and the state never sent it to me.
Been there.
Uh, we've been given the CIPA somewhere.
No, we had it on their website for a time and then took it down. Uh, it never provided it when I asked.
You need a John Henry there.
Oh, what is this all about?
Signature you missed.
Oh. What? The typical marijuana stuff. Essentially, we signed saying they are a non-conforming use. And they don't meet our legal requirements. And the state goes, thank you for your letter, now shut up, here's, here's their permit. And if they issue the permit and we appeal, they then essentially tell us we have no jurisdiction to give them a permit. Which is interesting, so. You know, the state agencies.
So where's this crosswalk supposed to go?
Oh, I don't know, that's up to them, or the safest place to put it at the intersection of their, uh, property.
No, where's it supposed to go when it gets to either side? Because you've got your ADA standard and everything else, whenever you build a crosswalk.
Worry about someone pushing a wheelchair across her. We, we are where we are, I'm trying to mitigate enough to be at E S. The only other option is to change our county code. Um, into a way, if possible, uh, with legal advice to allow us to send this to a hearings examiner, uh, to then rule on it, to then give it to ecology. In doing so, we're changing our county code and probably spending twenty thousand dollars. So I'm trying to mitigate that.
I guess my, my issue is, is, you know, we have a recommendation from the planning commission. It seems like there is a need along the river for bathroom facilities.
By who? Who asked for it?
From river users.
Oh, did, did one river user ask for it?
I'm just saying that next to any river, wherever somebody's floating, there's a need for bathrooms.
Right, but you're arguing a situation that we did not hear evidence of. Not one river user testified that they needed a bathroom, not one resident in county or out of county testified in favor of the project. So, anything you're arguing differently
Oh.
is a hundred percent speculation.
Well, you're speculating on whether or not there needs to be a crosswalk. And you're, you're setting down a gavel on the line on whether or not there has to be a crosswalk when there is an absolute way to figure that out, and that's through an engineering analysis by a professional who's licensed, who has to stand behind that.
Oh, interesting, that's.
And us saying there has to be one, it's a requirement, I think, is going above and beyond. Where you'd like to say you don't like to set extra
Okay.
Conditions
Sure.
on people and their private property rights, but you're, you're making a decision on why.
They're pressing private property. Alright. Okay, um. Yep, nope, good. You don't get a real. No.
I just had to get.
The consequences of accusing yourself.
Had to make you do it.
No, I'll show you, he's not, I'm joking. You just can't speak about it. You can look at it all you want.
I was up there trying to type this and listen to your conversation at the same time.
I don't do it. That's quadruple tasking.
What if we can't require it?
Then they do what they do.
Then what? Then you're saying?
I don't know. Does that have to do with pristine China?
Uh, well, we are the deciding factor, um, on a conditional, shoreline conditional use permit, and we're setting a condition that we don't know if we can set or not, across the state highway, we're county. You would think the Department of Transportation would require the applicant to create the crosswalk, not us. It's their highway. Are you, I mean, you always talk about liability, so if somebody gets hit in the, hitting this crosswalk now, are we going to be assuming liability since you know, we're requiring them to build a crosswalk? You brought that up when we talked about the Lisle thing, when they said, oh, if you wanna build a crosswalk, go ahead. We're like, well, we don't want that liability, but now we're gonna require it? We're now taking on that liability?
No, we're not. The state would be taking it on, because they built it. Again, that's bad legal advice, so.
Yeah, check them when you go back.
Um, yeah, I'm fine with this. Do we need to pull it out of the agenda packet already? Or?
The sticky's right there, you can sign it right now.
Is the original in here somewhere?
Yes. Or, oh, no. Well, no, that is the original.
That is, there's not another copy in somewhere, okay.
Oh, I didn't think about doing two of them, but I can make another.
No, 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 that's fine, I just wasn't sure if there was the old one in our packet
That he already signed.
that needed to come out.
Yeah, it will need to come out. That's the one that you will sign.
So there is one in here.
Not just now, yes, I did, but yes, it was, there's sticky, I'm looking at it right now, the sticky on it.
There's nothing in here.
That's good, and she knows what it's about.
Yeah, I, I don't see anything in here.
There it is.
Okay, let me see that one. As I say, I might already signed that one, so.
Well, then it's already done.
Yeah, well, my signature is void. Okay, I'm better now. Uh, I can send this. Fine, you.
It doesn't need my signature, right?
Nope.
Got it.
Thank you for all your hard work and your patience through this difficult time. Yeah, for four items on the agenda, this is a lot of signature. The start? I'll just pass half a stack over. Some of them will have yours. What did you sign here? Yes, H S County Agreement on General Terms and Conditions. Our Professional Health Services, you signed that one for some reason. I should scratch him. You did it again. Oh, I'll give you the folder for those in a minute. I was just letting you do some of them while I was doing the other part. So it's kinda hoarding the folder. Do you have any other business before the board? I mean, we've got all these.
Looking through my list.
Zoom people. God, we might have all the contentious stuff behind us now, this could be interesting going.
You just thought how it works, it's just the next thing comes.
Do you think there'll be new contentious stuff coming forward? I can't think of any more on our plate.
Um, you do know that the planning commission is currently looking at.
Well, that, yeah, that'll be interesting, but it's not currently on our that would be future on our plate.
Um, I've got a meeting tomorrow, since I'm guessing we're moving into just discussion, um, with, he sent emails to us. Um, his name is, oh, where did it go? The, the gentleman about a, a new wireless ISP in the area. Shane Milburn, I don't know if anybody got to say, I think we all got the email. Um, but I'm gonna meet with him tomorrow to figure out what click, like ISP is or whatever. But it's really interesting, um, I was looking over these numbers, um, from, uh, this is the broadband internet access project that we were getting. Um, and, uh, when we think that we're gonna average cost for a household of four thousand one hundred ninety-six, where we're putting in miles and miles of fiber, it's hard to imagine that these people that are not from around here, who's never worked in the area, don't understand that most of this stuff is rock. That we're gonna, you know, design to get to seventy-five percent of our households for those prices, I just doesn't pass the sniff test.
That makes me very happy to hear you say that. Because I thought I was the only one.
No, um.
No.
I signed it, I signed it right there. No, no, it's not, it says Dan, Jake, and Lori. You just signed over me. See, I signed it, Dan just signed.
I thought it was a chairman's signature, so.
The next.
Are you signed over? Are you signed over and put an X on it?
Well, I thought it was a chairman's thing, and I'm like, where'd you sign this for?
Well, I looked a little closer. Thank you for catching that, Lori, since he's trying to eliminate me.
Eliminate you. No, I, I, I agree. I kind of look at it that I don't know. I, I like, I need more information there. I need more data. I think that's a pipe dream. I think we're building more fiber to nowhere kind of scenario out of it.
And I also, um, Chelsea sent me the links to the information on where these towers would be. In, you know, it's, it's one thing to build fiber to a tower. But we actually have experience building towers in this county and about two million dollars per tower. And they want to put in fifty-eight towers. Those are also not the same locations where our towers are, which
And every one of those is potentially going to have a citizen complaining about the look or the view or whatever else.
No.
So it's, there's far more that's going to need said and done there.
High level, but.
I wanted to actually see a map and see if we were just going up three different creek bottoms somewhere and that was it. Or they figured they were getting their seven thousand people served.
Well, and, and then when I looked at their information, uh, it didn't, it I don't know how old the service is, is because it has bias app, but it had nothing for Starlink for services. And I'm well aware that Starlink has a lot of customers here.
Well, and that's the kicker to me too. And you can take the same dollar amount and buy everybody in the county a damn Starlink.
Everyone of them.
Every damn one of them and save money.
And save a lot of money.
Um, so, no, it's a government subsidy, which means it's, uh.
And I don't know if you heard, but in the debt ceiling talks, a lot of the money that wasn't allocated that was put towards rural broadband is going to get pulled back. Well, they, they're just they allocated a lot of money and that's what all these, these people are all shooting for, but a lot of that's going to get pulled back. So just letting everyone know. Not calling it a pipe dream. I'm just.
Yeah, anybody in this county that doesn't have reliable internet that isn't already on the Starlink waiting list, you have your own problems. Don't come to me. Government is not in charge of your cable or internet providing.
That was my updates. Uh, the only other update is had a good trip to DC. Uh, we met with Dan Newhouse and we met with, uh, a couple of senators and legislators from both Oregon and Washington and uh, everything went well. The discussion with, uh, the transportation department uh, was probably the most important discussion that we had about, um, where we're going and what changes we need to make in terms of our application for the two hundred million dollars um, that we're applying for. And so we're setting the, setting ourselves up in the best position as possible. The issue we have right now is, is that it looks like Oregon is going to well, Oregon has fallen apart. Uh, the Republicans, they can't get anything through the Senate, and so the twenty million dollars we're hoping, I guess, for a Christmas tree, uh, which means that the session will end. Nothing will get passed. The governor will call a special session to set the budget. And we can, all we can do is hope that we can get in on that budget. But, uh, all, everything is.
Why do they, oh, well, the Republicans are holding out, but I thought if they missed so many days, they essentially can't run for reelection.
They've already missed more days, and what I've heard is, is that they plan to appeal to the Supreme Court of Oregon on constitutional basis that that initiative that was passed was unconstitutional.
I was thinking there's like six of them that are already over that deadline.
They are, I mean, talk about like standing and dying on your laurels is but you know, I found out that those, they only make, they make twenty thousand dollars a year to serve in the legislature, and it's like, well, it's not about money.
Well, it's not about paychecks. It might be about money. It's just not about money to get out of paycheck.
When in doubt, keep your mouth shut.
People think that I say it. There's far more ways to make money than on a paycheck.
Well, now that we've considered everyone in the Oregon legislature, uh, somehow a grifter or something else. Uh, I have nothing else. If you're looking for a motion to adjourn, I'd be happy to make it in this.
Please.
What? Uh, with that, Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to adjourn the meeting, noting that we have no um, workshop scheduled for this week and um, we're not attending tonight. Nobody's attending tonight, right?
Nope.
Okay, that's it.
And I'll second.
Give me a motion to second to adjourn. Discussion, I will also mention that we didn't post anything about uh, multiple commissioners potentially going to the Republican dinner thing. Which could be a problem. So just, I won't be going, but I will throw that out for my seatmates. Uh, that was never posted, so just as a reminder. Um, with that, any?
We've never posted about the.
The Republican meeting, now we've posted.
We do?
I have, I made sure.
Oh.
Um, and I just thought about it just now.
Well, then let's, uh, but do you accept a friendly amendment to add that two or more commissioners may be present at the Lincoln Day Dinner?
Do you want to second the amendment?
I'll second.
Okay. Uh, without any discussion on the amendment, hearing none, so we will vote on the amendment first. Which is the motion that two or more commissioners may be present at the Clicked County Republican Lincoln Day Dinner. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Right. Passes. Uh, now we will vote on the original motion if there's no further discussion, which is a motion for adjourn. Uh, any discussion?
Are you required to pick a vote on a friendly amendment?
The amendment comes first unless you re draft the motion, and I can't tell you to redraft.
But there's a difference between an amendment and a, no, a friendly amendment.
You said amendment. Either way, it's done. Uh, all those favor adjourners say aye.
Aye.